Miss David Dance though, I think too.
Yeah.
But he's on, uh, he's on the Arts Commission now.
Oh, good.
So he's gonna do something else. And he was doing artwork anyway, so. Back with us, I think.
Let's see, a red light on.
We need just two minutes.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Go ahead, Alan, because the light is on.
Okay, this is so weird.
I just noticed.
Yeah, just checking. Okay, I'd like to, uh, call the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission to order. And I'd like to begin with a roll call, please.
Commissioners Ruig.
Present.
David.
Present.
Bremer.
Present.
And Chair Tensher.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Uh, I'd like a motion, please, to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, we have, um, our last meeting was March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any additions or changes to the minutes? And if not, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes.
Alan, is your mic on? I'm sorry.
It is now.
Okay, perfect.
Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's me.
No, it's me in this case. So, uh, that said.
I move to approve, uh, the meeting minutes of March twentieth.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it is approved by those that, uh, were present, so that's fine. Okay, uh, the next item, item six, public comment on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wants to make a public comment on any item not on our agenda? Seeing none, uh, we'll move to item seven, the administrative regular item, a presentation by the Napa Valley Vine Trail Coalition.
Did you want to introduce them, maybe?
Hello, this is Al Bremer, Deputy Public Works Director. Um, at one of our previous pre-rac meetings, we received a request, um, for updates to the, to the Vine Trail project and some of the Vine Trail, um, happenings. So we have representatives from the Vine Trail Commission here, um, and they both may be presenting. They have a presentation, so we'll load that up. And so we have Sean Casey White and Chuck McMinn, so. Thank you.
All right.
Can we start with the one that says alternate one? This is alternate one, and then if you pull up alternate four, then we'll go right from one to the other. Okay. That's okay, that's all right. Sure. Well, we're excited about, um, being here today, and, um, I was just talking with some folks earlier this morning from the real estate, Napa County Real Estate, um, brokers, meeting about how the trail creates a certain sense of community and sense of place. And the town of Yountville was the first, really, adopter of the trail. Um, and, um, and John Farins in particular has taken, you know, a particular interest in seeing the growth and development, not just of the Vine Trail, but of the connectors. And, um, my mother lived here in Yountville for eleven years and took advantage of the trails. And, you know, as a senior and retired, um, with someone with disabilities, living in Yountville was, um, a great benefit, um, for, for her and for me as, as the care provider. Um, and so it's nice to see, you know, um, my life in full, full circle and, um, also to see us taking on the next stage of the Vine Trail, which is to connect Yountville to St. Helena. And I think that's gonna be a huge step forward. And this has been the last link in connecting all thirty-one miles within, um, the county, but will be the linchpin for completing the, the original forty-seven mile vision of the trail. And are we ready? I'm just taking up time as we do a sound check here. But I'll, I'll add one more thing is that, um, you know, this last year has been very busy for us. We opened up the Calistoga to St. Helena section on August fifteenth. We opened Vallejo to American Canyon in March. Um, and, um, it's been an interesting journey as we open up two very distinct trail sections that are very different than Yountville to Napa. One that is more rural, that is in the ag preserve and in the private land of fifteen vineyard owners. Um, and then one that's very urban, and that has a lot of urban concerns with the, you know, the unhoused and, um, and safety issues more in a, in a busier thoroughfare than even, believe it or not, Highway twenty-nine up valley. So, um, but we're, we're really expanding and learning how to serve all of our people in our, in our community. And, um, what I enjoy seeing on the trail up valley is the diversity of people using it. And we see that a lot here in Yountville because of the veterans. And, um, and, you know, we talk about running and biking, we talk about rolling, um, because we have people that have disabilities. Our best ambassador of the trail, um, TC Halsey, um, is disabled, but he has made it a personal mission to engage with the veterans and recruit them to be ambassadors with us, but also people with disabilities that are using trikes and their wheelchairs and things to, to use the trail, because that's what the trail is all about. And, um, we're seeing already about a hundred and fifty users a day in the new section of the trail. I'm, I'm also excited to see that we have about two hundred new followers every month. There are actually, a lot of them are coming from the Vallejo and Solano County areas and, and other reaches, which shows the connectivity of the Bay Trail and the Vine Trail and what we hope to bring into the Napa Valley. And last but not least in my preamble is, um, the recognition that the Vine Trail has received for Napa County. You know, the, um, the trail, just this year alone, in the last six months, has received four recognitions. The, the first was being the second top destination in California by San Francisco Chronicle. Um, we also received our second global recognition as a destination for, in wine tourism. Um, and Forbes Magazine listed us as a global destination for, um, visitors. And so when the economy and tourism, you know, is in question and we're trying to reinvent or think about opportunities that we can encourage people to really see the, the larger benefits. I mean, as residents here, we all love Napa Valley, um, and we already know what makes it so beautiful, but I think people are wanting to look at and understand the valley for all that it has to give, not just for wine. And, um, and so when we showcase all of those things, and the Vine Trail is a transportation corridor that can bring that, um, we're excited to see, um, that come together. Last but not least in my preamble is that we're, uh, we're doing an event that was started by the Vintners in the Up Valley section in St. Helena to Calistoga on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh as a passport weekend. And people can ride their bikes and park at a winery, a participating winery, and enjoy a variety of tastes and culinary experiences. Over the two days, um, wineries are gonna offer music, but it's all based and centered around alternative transportation and being able to walk and visit and see these destinations in a walkable way. And, um, the Yountville TID called me a few, about a month ago and said, "Hey, we wanna maybe think about doing an event in Yountville that's Vine Trail-centric and that we can do a celebration around the trails and the access that we have in Yountville." So I've got that as a note on my calendar to see what we can continue to do and bring to Yountville. Okay, so what we're really here to do is to give you an update on the progress of the engineering and where we are with, um, the Yountville to St. Helena connection. So. Oh, there we go. Look at that. Okay. Um, so we can skip that slide, we can just keep moving along here. We usually start our presentation, this is from our community meetings, and we'll have another series of these for the community, um, over the next few months. Um, our plan is, we had, we had eight meetings last summer when we were in thirty-five percent design. We'll continue to do that at each stage that we move forward with. Right now, we're in environmental and cultural studies. Um, and so once we've completed, um, all of our environmental impact, um, reports, we'll reconvene another series of, of community meetings probably next spring, um, as, the closer we get to submitting NEPA and getting to the right-of-way stage. Um, but in the meantime, we are having individual meetings with landowners, um, on an ongoing basis. And we have a communication, um, link to all of the landowners and the neighbors in these communities, which I know is important here in Yountville, um, so that everyone is informed about what's going on and who's wandering maybe along the railroad tracks or taking photographs and things like that. So we're trying to do, and, and that's really our function as the coalition, is to be the communication and the voice for the community. Um, and so we'll share a little bit more of that. Whoop, we lost the screen. Oh, okay. Um, and so these next two slides, I'll just hit very quickly, but I think they're probably the most important, which is explaining, not, not that slide, but the, there you go, right there, is what is the difference between the coalition, what Chuck and I represent, versus the county or the jurisdictions? And so I think what has made the Vine Trail so unique in trail development is that, um, first jurisdictions like Yountville have taken on the project on their own. They were the first to lead the effort. American Canyon has done really Herculean efforts to engage their developers in making sure that the Vine Trail is built into their development projects. Um, and so places like Watson Ranch and other business parks have included the Vine Trail as a part of the plan. Um, but in other areas, particularly with the county and in St. Helena and Calistoga, we have acted as the accelerator. And so we have funded through, all of our funding comes from private donations, we don't accept government funding. Um, so those funds have helped accelerate the early studies and the early pre-engineering that has created the baseline that gets us to then be able to apply for the federal and state grants that gives us the seed money that we can give to the county or the jurisdiction to hire the engineers to start putting together the formal civil engineering plans and projects. The other thing that the coalition does that's unique is that we facilitate the landowner and wine train negotiations. In most public projects, you know, they, the jurisdictions can't talk to the landowners until after NEPA reports are filed. But in this case, as a private entity and a nonprofit, we can facilitate that communication all along this, all along the stages. And one of the pillars that Chuck built the coalition on was that none of the work that we would do would ever be by public.
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain, sorry, I just lost the, the, the phrase. Um, eminent domain. And so all of the easements and right-of-way is voluntary. Um, and in most cases, ninety percent of them are actually donated. So in Calistoga to St. Helena, fifteen, we required, three, we, um, we paid, um, the, the right-of-way, but in most cases, they're, they're additionally donated. Um, so the other thing that we do is we write the federal and state grants for the county, so we facilitate that. Again, just a helping hand to make sure that we state, make the, the trails top of mind and help, you know, move the project forward, because this is a huge effort. And then probably what we're most known for is that we fund the twenty-five percent match that allows us to get the state and federal funds to make the trail, trail construction possible. And then our other pillar is that we know that maintenance of the trail is very expensive. And if we want to maintain a world-class standard, we have committed to provide fifty percent of the maintenance. Um, and so we give the city, the town of Yountville and the city of Calistoga or St. Helena, Vallejo, fifty percent to maintain the trail, and we do that through private donations. And so we, um, and then we've developed some additional programming to help with education and the ag preserve. Um, the ambassador program is what we've used to create the culture to help reduce speeding and, you know, trash pickup and so forth. Um, and those enrichment opportunities like digital access that we're offering now and a new app that'll be released in August, those are all things that we've been able to do, um, to hopefully create a, an asset for the community that everybody can be proud of, but does not become a burden to the jurisdictions to maintain. Um, so, next slide. And then the role of the county is really the executor. They're the project managers, they're the ones that are there to get the work done. They hire the engineers, they, they navigate the environmental studies. Um, ultimately, while we negotiate the relationship with the landowners, the right-of-way and easements are filed with the county or the jurisdiction, depending on, you know, where, where the trail is located. Um, they adopt the, the documentation and, um, and then long-term maintain, um, the Vine Trail paths and facilities, just like the city, the town of Yountville does. Yeah, next slide. So these are the, all the stages, um, that we're in, and we're in, progressing from thirty-five percent into sixty-five percent design. Um, right now, we're doing the preliminary studies that are needed to move forward with the beginning of the civil engineering, um, work. So we've had, um, LSA, which is our environmental contractor, doing the environmental studies of the entire, uh, project area. And Chuck will talk about that, particularly in the area and the adjacent area of Yountville. Um, we've expanded the area of the project, um, to consider two alignments, and that's why we have alignment one and alignment four, so we'll talk about that a little bit more. And this is just a typical cross-section of the trail and particularly where it is in relationship to where the train is. So in some sections that Chuck will talk about in alternate one, we are on the, the east side of the railroad, um, and that's the rail, um, area that's closest to the highway. And in some cases, we're on the west side of the railroad. So in alternate one, we start on the east side of the railroad. Um, and then at Dwyer, we use the Dwyer Crossing to shift back to the west side of the, the railroad, and then we stay on the Constellation and the, mostly forty percent of the railroad right-of-way, um, to, um, to get to Oakville Crossroads. And this is what we'll talk about a little bit in this, not so much in this area, but as we get into Rutherford and farther up valley, you'll see that in some cases barriers are needed. It's gonna be, it'll look very similar to the barrier that's here in Yountville, the stack stone stamped, uh, cement barrier for safety. Um, and so we'll, um, we've just got approval from Caltrans to match that design, so we'll have the same aesthetic, um, for the valley and make sure that, you know, we keep that consistency. So I talked about this, we'll just keep moving forward so we can get to the good stuff, we'll just keep going here. Um, and so this is a quick overview that forty percent of this is in the wine train right-of-way, forty percent is in Caltrans, twenty percent is in private right-of-way, but this is the big number. Forty-four easements are required, um, there's fifteen additional easements that may be necessary, but probably not. But the good news is, we have forty-three landowners that have already signed off letters of support and are, you know, encouraging. It's not to say that we don't have a lot of opinions about the trail, and that's what, um, it, you know, that's what our role is, is to continue to have that dialogue and take as much of that feedback and make sure that our engineers are taking all of that in, so while they're in design, they're in, in, um, taking all of that into consideration. So I'm gonna turn this over to Chuck to talk about alignment one and four, which is the section that's in Yountville and Yountville adjacent and, um, and particularly impacts the Napa Nook and the, the Crescent area north of Washington and, um, past Oak, um, Yount Mill Road, and I'll turn it over to him.
Sean, if you could go to the next slide. So, uh, as Sean said, we are, so we are taking forward two designs, and we're calling them Alt one and Alt four now, but there's actually, there were three other designs that, uh, we, uh, we considered and then rejected after discussions with the landowners that would be affected. Some wouldn't provide the easements that would enable these additional alternatives to be done, and some of the local landowners felt that of the other alternatives that could be available, even if they could have been built, that alternate four was, was the ones that they could support. And this is kind of unique too, because most of the time, as Sean said, there is very little public exposure before, uh, the environmental is done. And then when people say, "Well, what about this and what about that?", uh, what happens is you have to go through a reset process where you go back, you know, several steps in order to, to look at the engineering of alternatives. This way, we're able to do the alternative engineering in parallel. So, the. So no, keep going, so, so I'm gonna talk about alternative one, which is the default, the one we started with. And that, uh, keep flipping till, till we get, keep going, keep going, all right. So this is alternative one, and we're gonna start in Yountville, and we're gonna move north. And I'm not gonna go all the way up to St. Helena, but I'm gonna go up to, uh, around Oakville Crossroads. So, alternative one, uh, has two variants. Uh, the, right now, we're doing the engineering to put a parallel trail in from California Drive to Madison on the west side of the railroad tracks. That may or may not ever go out for construction, but we wanted to do all the engineering of that now while we were doing the engineering for the rest of it. So that little piece which is not shown here, it's to the south, to the left in this diagram, is entirely on the Caltrans and the wine trains right-of-way, on the east side of the railroad tracks on the west side of Highway twenty-nine. And it comes up from the existing California Drive section of the Vine Trail, stays on the east side. And where, what was shown here is where it's coming in from the south at Madison. You see the little red diamonds and red lines? That indicates that in those, when that appears, that we're so close to the red, to the, to the state right-of-way, to the road right-of-way, that we need to install a barrier between the trail and the road, much like the barrier that's in existence right now on the, on the, on the way, on the east side trail. So there will be not all the way down to California Drive, but about a third of the way down to California Drive, leading up to Madison, there's a barrier. And then you see on the north side of the Madison, uh, intersection with Highway twenty-nine, there's another, uh, you know, a hundred feet or so of, of barrier before the, before the, the trail gets far enough away from Highway twenty-nine to not need a barrier. So, next slide. So this continues north. We're now, uh, in a section that is behind the, what's called the Caltrans Crescent, where their staging area is. And we continue on the east side of the railroad tracks, uh, totally on the wine trains right-of-way. Next slide. That continues as we go farther north, we're now at, uh, the, uh, bricks is on the, in the middle on the top of the screen. Keep going north, keep going north. Now we're, uh, behind, uh, the prior one, we're just behind Mustards. We continue on the east side of the tracks, all, totally on Caltrans right-of-way, keep going north, keep going north, keep going north, keep going north. And now we get to Dwyer Road. So everything there was on the east side of the railroad tracks, but it's the only place where the trail deviates from Highway twenty-nine but stays on the rail right-of-way, because the rail right-of-way deviates from Highway twenty-nine. Then when we get to Dwyer Road, you see that there is a crossing of the railroad tracks. It swoops out to the east and then makes a left, and makes a ninety-degree turn with, uh, a, with a proper linear crossing or perpendicular crossing of Dwyer Road, and then switches to the west side of the railroad tracks. Again, all of this is on Cal, is on wine train or county right-of-way, where Dwyer Road is the county road. Uh, keep going north. And we stay on the west side of the highway. You see that just north of Dwyer Road, there's that little blue square. That's actually a new bridge that spans a culvert, a, a pretty big culvert that's going under the railroad tracks, uh, at that point. Keep going north. Now, on the, on the west of the trail, we are on Mondavi's property. The vineyard to the north is Mondavi's property, and that goes almost all the way down to Dwyer Road. There's just a little city water parcel that's right there by where that culvert was. And on, in order to avoid some trees in a culvert, we, we, we wag out off of the wine trains property onto Constellation property in order to, you know, for just a little bit and then come back again. And we've talked to Constellation, and they're fine with that, they understand it. Keep going north. We're back on the wine trains right-of-way, still on Constellation, keep going. Uh, and now we are come, we, we have skipped, moved forward to just south of Oakville Crossroads, where there are half a dozen houses, uh, and right at the corner of Oakville Grade and Highway twenty-nine is the Corner Cafe, pro, commercial property. And we actually talked to the landowners there and to, and to Constellation. We were thinking, well, why don't we just stay on Constellation's property and go along that Vineyard Avenue and come out to Oakville Grade behind it? Because we didn't think that the landowners would really prefer to have it in front of their properties. And after discussing with them, they said, "Oh, we would love, we were fine with that. If you need an easement for a couple feet, if there's a wall there in one place, if you want to move the wall, go ahead and do that. But we like it there, we prefer you not to be on Constellation's property." So that's where the route is, and the engineers have figured out a way to fit it in. Uh, it's kind of hard to see, but in some places, it won't be the standard ten feet of asphalt, it will only be eight feet of asphalt, but that's still standard and still allowed. So keep going north. And then we get to the corner parcel there, that's the, where, where we wag out to go across Oakville Grade, that is the Corner Cafe parcel. And, uh, we will, will need to go behind the railroad crossing arm at that point, and we're still working on the engineering of how to do that. Keep going north. Uh, then we come back, uh, off of, again, that little corner is Constellation's property, but then, then that, uh, the piece that, after it's, it wigs back to the east, that is again on, uh, wine train property, keep going. And then we get up here to Walnut, uh, which is on the west side, and then Oakville Crossroads, which is on the east side. And you see some black overlay, overlay there, which is the, not our project, but at the, or the Oakville Roundabout Project that the Napa Valley Transportation, uh, Authority is taking forward. And we have integrated our design with their design. Keep going north. Okay, so, and so, and then we continue north from there. We're on the west side, and now you can bring up the other presentation. We're on the west side of the railroad tracks, all the way up to Rutherford Crossroads. At Rutherford Crossroads, they're putting in a light there, we're integrating our design with their design. But we switch from the west side of the railroad tracks to the east side of the railroad tracks, still on Highway twenty-nine. We continue on the east side of the railroad tracks, all the way up to Whitehall Lane, where the railroad crosses Highway twenty-nine. And then we cross at that crossing, and, uh, And then we cross at that crossing and continue on the west side of Highway 29, all the way up into St. Helena. Where now we're no longer on wine train right of way, we're on Caltrans right of way, in some cases, some of the property owners that are on the west side of Highway 29. So when we get into St. Helena, there's some other stuff going on, but I'll stop there. So that's alternative one. Any questions on alternative one before I switch to alternative four?
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for being here, but also thank you for the Vine Trail. It is a blessing to me personally, and I use it all the time. I've used the Up Valley-St. Helena to Calistoga Trail. Fantastic, beautiful, through Bothie Park. It's great. And it's really great for our tourists, too, because I can't tell you how many people I run into on the corner of, right where we intersect the Yountville Trail, and people are kind of looking at their maps. And I say, well, you know, need any help? And they say, well, I'm trying to figure out what restaurant to go to for lunch. So, I mean, there's a tourist component, and it allows us as community members to, you know, offer some suggestions for some options in town. And so I think that there's some good public relations for us there, too. The main thing that I, well, I have a handful of questions, but because you're talking about alternative one, the main thing that's in my mind, I've tried to figure out, you are going to utilize our existing Yountville Trail, because it is sort of more or less contiguous with the, well, where, well, it's not in the avenue, it's Yountville, but it's, you know, where it comes from Shandon and it comes on to our, you know, what's California Drive. But I'm trying to clarify in my own mind. So once we get to Madison, I mean, that part of our trail, the Yountville Trail that was initiated here, we'll get to Madison. And then are you going to have people cross Madison to get to the part of the trail that's kind of east of the railroad tracks? How does that work? And will there be a special? I love, by the way, I love the fact that you have that, a couple of lights, at least one traffic light, Up Valley, that really helps kind of coordinate the transfer, you know, from one side of the trail to the other side of the trail. But I'm wondering how that's going to work on Madison as well.
Okay. So, as I said, we're designing a parallel west side of Highway 29 trail from California Drive to Madison. But we're not committed to construct that. The town of Yountville says, let's wait and see how much that comes in, the cost of that comes in. And do we, as the town of Yountville, prioritize the dollars to put a parallel trail in when we already have a trail on the east side? And so we'll know how much it costs, that's one thing. And the other piece of it is, gee, well, causing people to come under the highway at California Drive, to go up the Yountville Mile and then cross at the light again back to the west side, will that create a lot of traffic issues for everybody, or won't it? And we're doing the traffic studies now to try to figure out the answer to that question. And traffic studies are part of the environmental analysis. And that will all come together, as Sean said, in the first quarter of next year. And we'll have real data from real traffic engineers, and we'll be closer to the cost of what that alternative trail would be. And at that point, it's a policy decision of what do we think is the best for our citizens and for our tourists and for our ability to build it.
Safety, because there's a safety factor.
And crossing, yes. So that is still a question to be answered, a very valid one. And I don't know the answer to it now, but we'll have a lot more information to provide and answer at the sixty-five percent design level, which is the same time in which the environmental documents are released.
Thank you.
Can I just have one more thing? I've just recently submitted the safe routes for all grants. So Vision Zero is what that grant is all about. So I've read the Napa County Vision Zero report extensively. And one of the projects is Madison, and the safety concerns on Madison is one of the top ten Vision Zero projects. So one of the things that we would consider, whether we cross at Madison or stay on the east side and do the parallel route, is what Vision Zero calls for, which is synchronization of the signal lights. And so what's, what could be beneficial for the Vine Trail project and for Vision Zero is when we combine those solutions into this project. We're doing something similar in St. Helena, where Vision Zero has identified the area between Pratt to Charter Oak. That is specifically where Main Street is part of the highway. And so those are synchronizations of those intersections and the safety issues on those. So where the trail is crossing or where the trail is...
Can I talk into the mic? I'm sorry, because we are recording.
Oh, I'm sorry. So basically, in summary, is that our engineers and what we are writing and what Chuck and I are ensuring is that the study that MBTA has done with Vision Zero is a major part of the project. And what they call countermeasures in the engineering are taking those into consideration. So at Madison, we plan on making sure that the improvements that we make at Madison will be part of a relief that hopefully will address some of the Vision Zero concerns.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, no matter whether we build this parallel trail south of California Drive or not, as you saw in the first slide there, there are going to be improvements to the crossing of Highway 29. In particular, there's going to be pedestrian crosswalks put in and adjustments to the light so that there is a display of wait and walk for people who would be crossing Highway 29. Even if another trail exists, there'll be people in Yountville who want to access the trail, and they need a safe way to cross Highway 29.
Can I make a clarifying statement question?
Yes.
The presentation, the first alternate that we just saw, alternate, is it four or one? Showed the Vine Trail on the opposite side of 29 from our trail, correct? That's the parallel.
Correct. Well, south of...
Between California and Madison.
Madison, correct.
So what they just presented wasn't using our existing Vine Trail. It was on the west side of 29. So that's what they just presented. And so they're designing it because they're currently in design. Doesn't mean that they're constructing it. They're still looking at the feasibility and the benefits of it. But that is what we just saw, is alternate four showing the utilization.
Okay. So let's go to alternate four. Yes. So alternate one has the option of building California Drive to Madison. Alternate four still has that option because it's not in the affected area. The affected area of alternate four is from Madison up to just south of the creek that is south of Cardinale. And that option continues the Vine Trail on the east side of Highway 29 in Caltrans right of way. So you see right here, I can't, is that, yeah. So you see right here that instead of crossing Highway 29 from the east to the west, that we cross Madison Street and stay on the east side of Highway 29. So we tee off of the existing Yountville Mile there, just south of Madison, improve the pedestrian crossing of Madison and continue north on the east side of Highway 29. And we're in Caltrans right of way. Caltrans has a very wide right of way there, because they thought they were going to continue to build a freeway back in the 50s and 60s. So next slide. So that design continues in Caltrans right of way, as far away from the highway as we can be, but still beyond Caltrans right of way. Continue, 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 continue. Now we're coming up at Washington Street, and we improve, provide for a pedestrian crossing at Washington Street. Continue. And then here is an area where there are black diamonds, not red diamonds, which means that we are in an area where we need some sort of a barrier between the highway and the trail, but that barrier can be what's, can be the post and, you know, the post with the metal guardrail, metal guardrails. It's called Midwest Metal, Midwest Metal Guardrail. And so, and that continues for a while. Keep going, keep going. And so you disappeared there, because we got far enough away. Then there's a driveway. Keep going. Some more vineyards. Keep going. And in some cases here, we are on private property, not on Caltrans right of way anymore. But the private property owner has, we have already talked to, and they would be amenable to providing easement required to do this. Keep going. Another driveway. Keep going. Another driveway. Keep going, keep going. And this is the entrance to Delgado, improving the crossing there. Keep going. Another driveway. Keep going. Oh, excuse me, that's Yount Mill Road, I'm sorry. Keep going. A bridge, that little brownish thing over a culvert. Keep going. More driveways. Keep going. All right. And then, as you see, that long dash, short, the long dash to short dash long dash, that's depicts the edge of the Caltrans right of way, and it gets narrower north of here. And there is no room to continue the trail forward on the east side without private easements. Some of the landowners of which north of here would not grant the easements. So we need to cross a Highway 29. And the proposal is a light similar to the lights that are up at Bothie Park. They're called HAWK, High Intensity Activated Crosswalks. And there will be a HAWK signal across Highway 29.
So where is that?
So that is just south of Cardinale's driveway.
Okay.
It's north of Dwyer Road and south of Cardinale's driveway.
Where's the Napa Valley Welcome to Napa sign?
It's a little bit farther to the north from here. So, and it's probably, it's fifty, so next slide, it's like fifty yards or a hundred yards south. So it is not directly across from the Welcome to Napa sign, because the Welcome to Napa sign is after the Caltrans right of way is no longer wide. So we, originally, we were on the wine trains right of way, less driveways to cross, less interference. Some of the property owners and neighbors on that side of the highway said, well, what about this alternative? Is it safer? Is it easier? Is it cheaper? Is it, you know, just, you know, we're not sure we want people riding on the wine trains right of way behind our houses or across Dwyer Road. So we said, okay, we'll take a look at that. From our perspective, the county's perspective, the Vine Trail's perspective, we will design either alternative to be safe. This alternative is probably $2 million more expensive than alternative one, because it requires a new crossing of the railroad tracks, which is worth a million bucks all by itself. And in order to get that, it requires one more year to deal with the California Public Utilities Commission, and therefore, time is money, and that costs some money. And the HAWK signal itself on Highway 29 costs money. So it's more expensive. It is not behind property, so it's better from that point of view. But it does require a crossing of Highway 29, which some folks would prefer, you know, some folks would prefer not to have. And so both of these are being taken forward, all the environmental is being done, all the cultural studies are being done, all the traffic studies are being done on both of them. And the way this works is both of the alternatives will be presented to, in draft form, they'll have all kind of public comments and public meetings and get people's formal questions posed. And then as part of the environmental process, all those questions must be answered. And then all of that is brought before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to make a recommendation of which of the two alternatives, in their judgment, is best for the citizens of Napa County. So those are the two alternatives. And as I, and then from here, of course, north, everything that I set up to Oakville Grade is the same for both of them. So I'll stop there, and we can talk specifically about alternative four.
Great presentation. Thank you, and thank you for your efforts. On our behalf, we do enjoy the Vine Trail.
Thanks.
You have an interesting dilemma ahead of yourselves, as we do. We've built a million-dollar mile already. And really, what I'm hearing is you have option one and option four, but within both, you have development of a California to Madison on the west side as well.
We have the design for both, but we have...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we have the design for both, so that, so that, so that there will be quantitative information about that. But it's not necessarily the case it's going to be done. And in fact, in order to, in order to qualify for construction grants to build the section between California and Madison, the town of Yountville would have to commit some local funds, like the town of, the city of St. Helena and the city of Calistoga committed funds to the prior section. And the city of St. Helena will be contributing more funds, along with the county, along with the Vine Trail. So the town will make the decision of, do they or do they not want to support the local funds that were required to even qualify for a state or federal grant to build that west side connection.
Right, exactly. And so my real question is, so let's say that the trail stays where it is on the east side. Can you elaborate a little bit more about what the crossing at Madison to the option one continuation north of Madison would be like? What, you had mentioned that part of Vision Zero, they're going to put one or more crosswalks across the highway?
Right.
Could you please tell me a little bit more what that looks like?
So that is in the active design process now, so I can't show you a picture that says this is what it's, what they're thinking it's going to be like. They're doing the work right now. And in particular, some of the work can't be completed, the civil work can't be completed until the traffic studies are done. And the traffic studies won't be done until October. The data has all been collected for the traffic studies, but the crunching of the information and the creation of the reports have not been done yet. And that, those reports inform the civil engineers about, well, how long should the, what kind of treatments, you know, for pedestrians should there be? How long should the, it stay, you know, white when you push the button? What's the interval that you cause the pedestrians or bicycles to wait before the light changes? All of that stuff is involved in the traffic planning, and we haven't completed that yet.
Thank you.
But October is kind of the target timeframe, when the traffic study will be done. Then they'll incorporate some of that information into the civil engineering plans, the sixty-five percent plans that'll be out in the first quarter.
Bernie, did you have something else?
So given all of this, what is your estimated, just best guess timeline about when the project will be, will begin?
Right.
And then, of course, the finish, the final timeline? What is your best guess?
So that, the design should be in draft form, when the environmental is done, in draft form in the first quarter. That should all be approved by the end of 2026. As Sean said, we just applied for a grant for some construction. But the last time around, we were turned down for a grant that said, for a construction grant, for the entire thing. It was a $40 million grant request, too big for the federal government to grant, too big for the local state government to grant. We scored higher than a project that was funded below us at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, because they didn't have enough money to give us. So this time around, we have applied for a smaller grant, a $12 million grant, to construct just the piece of this design that goes from Zinfandel Lane to Pratt, not the piece south of Pratt, I mean, to south of Zinfandel down to Yountville. If we get that, we're one step closer, but we'll have to apply for another set of grants. The next set of grants are the Active Transportation Program grants that come up next spring, assuming that the current administration is as supportive of biking and walking as prior administrations. And there's already some, despite the talk and the hand waving and everything else, there were some aspects of the bill that just got passed, the federal bill, that were detrimental to the funding of hiking and biking trails. So we don't have, I guess we're always optimistic, but we may not see additional construction funding coming for the Yountville to Zinfandel Lane section for a year or two, or until after the midterms. And then with a different balance of power in DC, maybe there's a different... And then, with a different balance of power in DC, maybe there's a different focus, or, you know, so, but it's, it's years, not decades away, I don't think. You know, we were hopeful it would be done on our 20th anniversary in 2028, but that would mean that we need construction, you know, we need, need construction grants in the '26 cycle or the '27 cycle. But it may be a few years after that, but we're, you know, we're moving forward.
You didn't ask the question, but I'll, I'll come to the mic. You didn't mention this or ask this question, but I'll fill this in. We just finished doing the evaluation of the funding for Calistoga to St. Helena. And so to give you an example of how the trail is funded, 48% of the trail was funded by federal grants, and these are appropriations for transportation and alternative transportation. So the majority of the funding comes from those, those federal grants. There were a few smaller grants that came from other jurisdictions and regional grants. 24% came from the county, and 26% came from, 28%, if you include right-of-way and some other trail elements, came from the community. It came from the coalition. So the second highest donor, if you will, or contributor, are the citizens that are contributing to the coalition funding. So that's private funding. So then, the jurisdictions, the city, the towns, and the county, the county takes the next biggest piece of that, which is about 24%, and then, Calistoga and St. Helena contributed 9% each. So, that's an important look at the pie of this funding because I think many times people ask, are local tax dollars going for this trail? Is this, is this trail paying for just tourism in the area? Or how is this, you know, how are we really funding it? I'd just like to remind people that there are, and this administration may change things, but there are earmarks for trails, for transportation, and for sustainability projects that this qualifies for. And so, we're doubling down on those opportunities, but it's a pretty good return when we, when we realize that, you know, every, for every dollar that's donated to the Vine Trail Coalition, you know, we're getting a three-to-one investment from state and federal dollars, not local just, but federal and state dollars. And so, that is really, I think, is a strong testament to the public-private partnership that we have put together to make this possible.
Yeah, more questions?
One more question for me. You did mention the percentage that the state contributes in terms of grant money. How does that look? Is that looking more optimistic? I mean, philosophically, I would think that the state would be supportive. I mean, we're always talking about budget problems.
So, so most of the money comes from the federal government, and it is funneled through the state. I think, so there was two buckets of money in the Active Transportation Program. There was a 75% bucket that was administered by the state based on the merits of the projects as the state saw it. And 25% was given to the local jurisdictions, of which MTC got its 25, MTC got a share. But I believe MTC matched the money that came in that bucket. So roughly 12 and a half percent of the money was state money, and 87 and a half percent was federal money funnel through the state. The state, the California Transportation Commission made the decision about where to spend the money, so that's locally driven but federally funded.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? Just, just based on the slide that you have up? I think there was mentioned, and maybe you could clarify, that regardless if the existing section of trail is sort of bypassed, you would still add in a safety crossing feature at Madison?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
Yes.
So regardless of either plan, there is acknowledgement people would still use the existing trail and need a safe way to cut over. They would probably look just like this.
Yes, so, so this one on Alt 1 shows two crossings, a crossing of 29 and a crossing of Madison.
At Madison.
On the Alt 4, it just showed a crossing of Madison because we weren't touching Highway 29 because there was no, we didn't kind of want to encourage people to cross 29 into the wilderness where there was no trail.
Thank you.
But did I understand correctly, regardless of, from the Active Transportation, there's going to be a crosswalk put in there anyway? Whether the trail, even if it didn't exist, the crosswalk would go in?
So that actually is still in design, whether an improvement of the crosswalk across Highway 29 would be part of Alt 4 or not. Because we wouldn't be crossing Highway 29 with Alt 4, we would stay on the east side, and we would cross from south to north across Madison, but not from east to west from, across 29, if it was Alt 4.
But if it was Alt 1?
If it was Alt 1, then there would be this configuration. And then, what about if there is an alternative on the west side of Highway 29 that Yountville wants to support so that not everybody comes into Yountville if they're going to leave Yountville, and so they would come up on the west side? If, if, if California to Madison were built, then a crossing of Highway 29 would be part of Alt 1 even if, or even, part of Alt 4 even if there was an alternative way to get from Madison to California Drive south of there? Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions? All right, I thank you very much for letting us do that. Just one final thing to note is, we, we have done intercept surveys of people who use the trail. And we've asked them what their home zip codes are, and 70% of the zip codes are our residents. So when we think about this trail, for every person, for every three people that you see out there, consider that two of them are our local citizens. So this is first and foremost about something for our community and only secondarily for the tourists, and not the other way around.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you both very much for your presentation. All right, I'd like to move on, if we can, to staff informational reports and Reserva. Will you please give us an update on Public Works?
Yes, again, Deputy Public Works Director, Rosalba Ramirez. I did want to, once again, thank the Vine Trail for coming in. And regarding upcoming events for the Vine Trail, I know I check it frequently, but your social media pages are always very informative and up to date. So, run people that they do have that to look, see all the different fun events that the Vine Trail has coming up and to offer.
And if there's anyone on this commission that would like to be on our distribution chain for the Yountville to St. Helena, you know, so I have distribution lists for the Napa Nook neighborhood, and I have a distribution list for the Oakville Grade neighborhood, and the Bale Slough, and some of those other unique choke points in our design. And so, or just the at-large that we BCC everybody on. So if you have an interest in that and you want to give your name or email to the committee, I'll be happy to add you to that. It is probably only once a month or so, but those are the direct communications that we try to share. And then John is on our Route and Engineering Committee and gets regular updates that way, but we'd love to include you if you want to be a part of that.
Well, thank you. For Public Works, just some of the updates or work that you'll be seeing happening. Summer is our construction season. So we have the BIG project, which is our annual paving project, still funded by Measure T funds. In the next couple of months, we'll officially adopt the Agreement for Measure U funds, which are the same idea behind Measure T, but it's the, the new bill that was passed extending it. You'll see, it's similar, similar requirements and similar work. But this year's Measure T project is Washington Street from Yount Street all the way north to the town limits. So we're doing paving improvements and including Weber. So paving improvements, we're trying to also improve mobility, part of our overall improvements to our mobility corridor or, you know, work, which will include a clear brick pathway or walkway from the Vine Trail entrance on Weber to the Wyville Commons site, and then potential improvements to the striping facilities over, heading towards Madison to where we have a bike lane, and the other entrance to the Vine Trail. So that is a pretty big project. Right now, we're still in scheduling and determining the type of work. So once we have more information, we can come back with another update, letting you know when the work's going to start and which portions could be at night, which portions could be during the day. But that's going to be a nice improvement to Washington Street and Weber, which if you've been by Weber, pretty bad shape. So that will increase our overall road improvement. Smaller projects, miscellaneous sidewalk improvements. We do have a contractor that comes by to do what we can with minimal sidewalk improvements, so we shave down any deviations to sidewalks could be tripping hazards. So if we're able to shave it down to flatten that area, it lasts us longer before we have to come out and do a full project or reach out to, to property owners about improvements that could be a trip hazard. So we had them come around, and they get spots and segments, so as we see more, then we reach out to them again and define, redefine the scope. And then our, our end, we have a project that's every year, as we spot them and as we're able to fit it in between bigger projects, going through our parks facilities and in front of our public buildings, replacing sidewalks and making sure we remove any trip hazards. And you'll see different work come around there. So as part of the Washington project, you'll also see improvements to sidewalk and existing corner ramps. And Sam might also weigh in on this next project, the barbecue kitchen over at the Community Hall Community Center. That is not fully complete yet, but it's almost complete to the point where if you go out there and look, it looks pretty good. So that one's wrapping up. And those are kind of our current ongoing projects, and then we have some smaller miscellaneous things coming up that I'll provide more updates at the next meeting as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Reserva? All right, if that's the case, Samantha, will you please update us on the Parks and Recreation Department?
Absolutely, thank you. And I just wanted to welcome Terry to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission as our newest member. We're thrilled that she stepped up to fill that unfilled seat. So thanks for being here, Terry. So yeah, for Parks and Recreation, I'll give a program update. We're in our fifth week of camp already, which seems insane, but we do have 80 campers this year and 22 counselors in training, so, and 25 staff. So I often get, I've several times said, what are all these blue shirts? I think people think all the blue shirts are staff, but usually when you see it, about at least a third of them are our volunteer counselors in training. So they're learning important leadership skills and then volunteering during camp as helpers. And so, we continue to run, the next week's waiting list is 51. So it just continues to show the kind of child care needs that we have in the Napa Valley and that we are sought after. I don't anticipate us being able to grow past where we are now, which 80 is, you know, 50 was our maximum for pretty much my career here. So we figured out how to take 80 campers successfully, and it's been a really terrific summer. Taylor does an amazing job, Taylor Solis, training her team and overseeing the program. And it's pretty intense, 80 kids in one place is, is pretty tense, so gotta get it to her. Our Golden Ticket program for the summer is in full swing. We have 127 Golden Ticket members. We do scale back during the summer just because we tend to see the attendance drops. And if you might remember my previous reports, during the winter season, we had, I believe it was 240 Golden Ticket members. So people travel and, you know, maybe they watch grandchildren and they have a lot going on. So we scale back programming to match that, but that's going really well. Obviously, our summers are very event-heavy. We did the Pride in the Park celebration, which was another huge success this year. We had our Fourth of July event in Veterans Memorial Park, which was great. If you might remember, last year, we had to cancel and pivot because it was 107 degrees. So the weather has definitely been in our favor so far this summer. We are, not this Sunday, but the next Sunday, we'll have our third summer concert in the park. And so those are going really well, and then our movies in the park as well. Next Friday is our movie in the park and campout. So we moved that into July this year instead of August due to the school calendar, so that should be another great success. We have finished the draft of our Fall Recreation Guide, which takes us from August into, excuse me, December. So we are pretty much set in our plan for fall. The rec guide will be out in the mail the first week of August, and then we start resident registration on August 13th. So we're excited about that. A couple of things, Reserva did mention the barbecue project. We had our first community cookout last night, which went really well. The equipment is in the process of being hooked up, the new equipment, so we didn't cook, but we did have a great crowd there. And once all the amenities are in place, I think it's, it's going to be a terrific asset, and it really looks great. Reserva's been instrumental in getting that project through, so thank her for that. I did want to mention, along with the Washington paving project, we are looking at Hopper Creek Park there because it did come up in the ADA transition plans of the past, and then the one that'll come forward to you to review as needing some improvements. So we think this is a great time to make some of those improvements when Washington and the curb and sidewalk and, and things are being looked at in that area. So you might see nothing huge, more so just making it more accessible to everyone. Also, working on the south parking lot at Veterans Park, I believe. I think that might come in the late summer, or probably fall, it looks like at this point, right?
Yeah, we'll provide more updates as we get closer to that. Our paving project, a lot of our construction projects utilize that south end as a staging area, so we don't want to do any improvements until that project's done so that we don't mess up any of the improvements we do at the south parking lot. So once that moves forward, we have more updates, probably closer to the end of the paving project, I'll let you guys know what's happening and probably present a layout of what we have anticipated for that area.
Great, thank you. I did just want to note at your, the next meeting, which is in September, we'll have a Commons, Yountville Commons update from the Town Manager on the progress of the planning for the, what happens after the design period that we've already been through. So the coordinated effort is to provide quarterly updates to the Commissions and the Council. And so I believe the Council will have the update that Tuesday, and then the Town Manager will attend your Thursday meeting to give an update on that. And I just wanted to pose a question for you, maybe something for you to be on the lookout for. We've had several occurrences lately of motorized vehicles in the parks or on the paved sidewalks in, through parks. One was reported, and then I've seen twice now golf carts in Veterans Park during events. And so just something to kind of keep your pulse on. I'm talking with Public Works about ways to mitigate that, but, and also brainstorming outreach. I think sometimes people think their golf cart, although not street legal, can be just like a motorized mobility scooter, but that's not the case. And those definitely should not be in our parks and trails. So I just wanted to pose the question, if you've seen any of that or if you're getting any feedback, and then also just kind of keep an eye out on that. So we're trying to be strategic in how to address it, but one report was an actual motor vehicle that drove down the path and parked at the dog park. And then, the other was me twice at events in Veterans Park, having to talk to people who were driving right through with their golf carts. So, I mean, obviously, you know, golf carts, if you ran over someone's foot with that, that's going to do some damage. They're not, they're not light, so.
If I can expand on that, too? So, the sidewalks, the trails, the bridge crossings, those weren't designed to sustain larger weights like golf carts. Even though golf carts are smaller than vehicles, a lot of them, some of them here are very heavy. They're very, they're just a smaller version, they're basically a small car. So the more they get our sidewalks and our pedestrian paths get driven on with golf carts, the quicker you're going to start seeing damage in deteriorated paths. Some of the bridge crossings that we have been allergic to golf carts using are definitely not designed to support that weight. And there's also the width issue. Some of them won't, you could encounter, you know, head-on with a pedestrian or bicyclists, and kind of there's no way around that. And then for our, our actual landscaping and park areas, the sprinkler systems. We won't know what got damaged until we see a giant leak, and it's, could be because somebody drove on it and didn't realize that there was a sprinkler head there. So also, a lot of reasons behind us. It's not just our saying, no, don't do it. It's, there's some, there's some factors behind it.
And it's actually the law. So our municipal, our municipal code dictates that motorized vehicles, which, of which a golf cart is considered, are not allowed on our parks and facilities and trails, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have? Anyone have questions?
Thank you. Well, do we know the people that have these golf carts? And is it, is it, is it okay to approach them?
I did approach them and I gave both a warning and they both vacated the area. But I was under the impression that it may be a more regular occurrence when someone is not there to tell them that. And so they were both educated and educated to the fact that the sheriff could cite them and all of the, all of the things. And then regarding the actual car that drove down the path, we did collect video surveillance and passed all of that on to the sheriff's department. So, yeah. Yeah. So just, you know, maybe, I know, you know, you all know people in the community and if you just see or say, you know, see something, say something. And if you're not comfortable approaching them, just, you know, if you know the person, we can always send some outreach to them too. So, yeah.
Go ahead, Myrna.
What about signage? I haven't seen any signs that actually prohibit these things. And I know we have a lot of signs around town, but...
That's the struggle is really, we have, we do. But that's kind of the next step, I think, is, is we're looking at, do we need, if this is becoming a regular occurrence is the installation of bollards, which isn't the greatest because it intercepts, you know, bikes trying to come through. And, and there's, there's pluses and minuses to bollards. But, you know, signage is something too. And just overall public outreach, I think is, you know, some messaging you may, I don't know if you may read the town newsletter that comes out every other week. I did have some, you know, park reminders in there, of which that was one of them. So, you know, I think signage is definitely something we're thinking about. Yeah.
Okay, Myrna.
I did ask you about the dog park.
Yes.
And did you, are there any kind of anecdotal?
Yeah, so Myrna had reached out, and I've heard of this. So there, Rancho de Napa built a small dog park on their facility. And there has been views of residents utilizing that who may or may not live there. We're not going to police that, obviously. But Myrna's question was, you know, is that impacting the use of our, our dog park? And it, again, is kind of just quantitative data. I don't know. We don't, it's very hard to count people in and out of the parks. I, I did think like, oh, I'll look for, you know, maybe a gate counter for a while. But, you know, we have cameras on that area now, so my snapshot view is, I don't think so. I think that it's mainly being used by people at Rancho who may not live there with small dogs, you know? And we're, we are working towards that to be able to better serve that need. But we're just in kind of a quandary at this point as to do we invest more in this current space or do we just patiently wait the, what could be a shorter term than longer term for the new, the new facility to go in? So I don't believe it's impacting the use. We have the liaison, the Dog Park Liaison Group that I meet with regularly. So I can, I, I thought too of reaching out to them and just seeing if, you know, they're hearing or saying anything. But I have not heard from the park as far as any complaints of non-residents using it. So, yeah, not sure if that's helpful or not, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
And every time I go by, which is frequently, it seems it's always in use.
Absolutely. It, it is. It's surprising. So I looked at the, so we do have, what I was going to say, we do have surveillance cameras on the Yountville Commons facilities now. One of them points out to that field space. And so, you know, I can't sit there and watch, you know, 12 hours of video for a month. But I just take little snapshots. And there's obviously the high times of the day and the low periods. And usually when it's warm out in the middle of the day, you're not seeing a lot of use. But that morning time and then really that evening time is when we're seeing a lot of use. I mean, some days it seemed like I was counting, you know, over 20 dogs. Yeah. So.
Yeah, that's...
I think it's still a very active, you know, use. And definitely, you know, I think our fear too of the word getting out, like there are people that are coming up to utilize it, but I don't feel like we're overrun with that. So I think our residents are really feeling still very well-served by it.
Great. All right. So now item nine, Commissioner comments or reports. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report on?
Just a comment. I hear from my friends in Napa with small children and they are overjoyed with being able to bring their kids here for summer camp. They question why Napa doesn't have programs like this or very little. So thanks, hats off to you, Sam, because it's a needed facility and, and it's, it's well-appreciated by a lot of people.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that, because this has come up quite, you know, over 15 years I've been here, this has come up. And, you know, people know like, well, Yountville doesn't have any kids. Why do you focus on this? And it is because of the larger issue of Napa County having childcare issues. But we serve a lot of parents who work either in Yountville or Up Valley. And then we still, we do have, I believe, nine regular resident children that are coming through the program, you know, which is still providing them a service, nine out of 80, you know? But people are like, there's no kids in Yountville. There really, there are. It's not a ton. But this program, my, my main point was, this program is 100% cost recovery. And so all of the fees paid cover all of the costs, including the full-time staffing costs of Taylor that are there. So I don't want the messaging, you know, within the community sometimes consuaying and go is like, well, why are we subsidizing all these non-resident kids? And we absolutely are not. So we cannot make money because as a government agency, we cannot turn a profit. But we recover every cost of that camp program from the fees we pay. But the beauty of it is, we work very closely with CRC, which is Community Resources for Children. And so this summer, we have 12 campers coming through CRC that are on full scholarships. That means they are low income and their family meets those requirements and CRC pays their costs. And then in the resident children who may not get the full cost recovery, they're getting our youth subsidy fund. So we're still, even though it's, it is, childcare is expensive and camp is expensive. And then we add on the pool and the field trip, but we're still really meeting the need of a lot of low-income families as well.
I think the thing too, besides the cost recovery, and I think this is true of many elements in the Parks and Rec Department, is that nine children or all of the residents get to enjoy a more diverse and larger offering because we have, you know, cost recovery from people outside of town. So I think that's important.
Not only that, I, I've told some of my friends in Yountville who, who have the same issue, well, why are we serving? And I think it's a leadership, I, I think it's a communal, community leadership effort. And I think it's great that the town of Yountville, you know, extends itself to the larger community. I think it's, it's just, it's great for what, what is happening here, but it's also great for our image because it, you know, it, it makes us, you know, be part of the broader community and not just a little enclave of whatever upscale people they think we are. And so I, personally, I just, I really feel good. It, it's, it feels good to broaden our, our scope that way. So I'm, I'm impressed with it. And to that point, I guess I got a, I got a text today that tomorrow you're honoring us with popsicles.
I forgot.
At 2:00 to 4:00. And, and it's because of, this is Parks and Rec Month. I didn't know that, but we should be honoring you, but we are verbally honoring you. And thanks for the popsicles. I'm going to stop by.
Yeah, 2:00 to 4:00, we're doing popsicles on the plaza tomorrow. We'll have out music and lawn, you know, our lawn games, just something fun for the community to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. So if you have time to stop by.
Thank you.
And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Samantha and the Parks and Rec Department received a proclamation at the town council meeting in honor of Parks and Rec Month. And it was very nice and some of the staff was here and it was good luck. So, thank you. Okay. So any other Commissioner comments or reports before I ask for adjournment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. I need a second.
I need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always.
.........